And looks like we are recording. So, thank you everyone for being here. I'm gonna go ahead and call this session of the City of Ocean Shores Hearing Examiner to order. For the record, today is May seventeenth at ten AM. We have three items on the agenda today, all of which involve requests for reasonable use exceptions, or RUSE for short, to allow for development impacts to wetland buffers. I believe first on the agenda, we have number RU E twenty-three oh oh two, a request for Rue approval to allow for the development of a single-family residence that would result in two thousand six hundred and fifteen square feet of impacts to a buffer associated with a category-three wetland on an approximately seven thousand five hundred and sixty-five square foot lot that is located at four forty-seven Spinnaker Street Southwest. My name is Peregrin Sorter. I'm a hearing examiner with Sound Law Center, whom the city has selected to hold certain land use hearings like this one. And it will be my role today to collect evidence in the form of exhibits and testimony to determine whether this proposal complies with the city comprehensive plan, zoning ordinances, critical areas ordinances, and the specific criteria for approval of a reasonable use exception. To that end, I received and reviewed several exhibits in advance of the hearing. These include the application and project plans, a wetland report and buffer mitigation plan prepared by Agua Tierra, the staff report prepared by city staff, and various notice materials. And I will go ahead and admit those exhibits into the record. Should anyone have any additional exhibits they would like admitted into the record, please let me know when it is your opportunity to testify, and I will go ahead and address admitting additional exhibits at that time. Speaking of testimony, all testimony today will be under oath or affirmation because were my decision to be appealed, the recording of today's hearing, along with the admitted exhibits and my written decision would serve as the foundation for any such appeal. I may ask questions of those who are testifying today. I am not trying to trip anyone up. I'm just trying to ensure that I have a clear understanding of the proposal so that after the record closes, I am able to produce a decision that is hopefully clear and legally defensible. The order that we typically follow, and I believe we will be following today, is first we will hear from city staff who will provide an overview of the proposal, along with any recommendations that the city may have. Following that, we will hear from the applicant and see if there is any additional information they feel that myself or members of the public should be aware of in advance of my decision being issued. After that, members of the public will have an opportunity to testify. And finally, following any such public testimony, we will turn back to the applicant and the city as necessary for any response. And I think with that, we can get started. Mr. Reed, let's get you sworn in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony that you give here today?
I do.
Thank you. And can you please state and spell your name for the audio recording and explain your role at the city?
Sure. Good morning. My name is Marshall Reed. I'm the city planner for the City of Ocean Shores, and my name is spelled M A R S H A L L, last name Reed, R E A D. And I will be providing testimony and the staff report for today's hearing.
Thank you. And Mr. Reed, did my summary of the exhibits track with what you were hoping I'd review in advance of the hearing?
They did.
And were there any additional exhibits or comments submitted prior to the hearing?
No.
Okay. Thank you. You may proceed with your presentation.
Okay. Good morning. This is an application for a reasonable use exception, number twenty-three dash zero zero two, submitted on April fourth, twenty twenty-three. The applicant, Jim and Joel Fine, goes by Debbie, from Castle Rock, Washington, would like to obtain a reasonable use exception to develop a lot for a single-family residence located at four forty-seven South Spinnaker Street in Ocean Shores, Washington. The lot size is, as stated earlier, seven thousand five hundred and sixty-five square feet. The proposed impacts to the buffer only of this parcel is two thousand six hundred and fifteen square feet. The existing zoning in this parcel is R one. It's a single-family residential developments. It does not have a shoreline jurisdiction numbering this. The wetland category was identified as a category-three wetland with a buffer width of a hundred and fifty feet. The surrounding conditions of this parcel, all surrounding properties are zoned B one or one. So we have private recreational to the north, residential to the south, to the east, residential one, to the west, R one as well. The land use designation for all lots surrounding this parcel are single-family. The existing land use to the north is a city-owned private recreational lot, to the south, an RV lot, to the east, a single-family residence, and to the west is also a single-family residence. The background of this property, the subject property addressed four four seven South Spinnaker Street is located in the southwest corner of Ocean Shores. The closest intersecting road is roughly a hundred and thirty-four feet southwest at Spinnaker Street Southwest. The property is zoned R one and is located in the single-family zone. The zoning in the immediate vicinity is exclusively R one, single-family. Notice, the public hearing notices for the reasonable use exception application, Rue twenty-three dash oh oh two, scheduled for today, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three at ten o'clock, were sent to owners within three hundred feet of the subject property on or before May fourth, as required by Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen fifty-two oh ninety. The hearing information is also available at the City of Ocean Shores website, www dot O S gov dot com. The notice of the public hearing was provided to the Daily World Newspaper for publication in the May ninth and May eleventh editions. Staff analysis, staff has determined that this proposed development project is listed as a permitted use as defined in Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen sixteen oh twenty A. Wetland buffers exist on this property and surrounding parcels, which require the application for and approval of a reasonable use exception in order to impact those buffers. The reason, the purpose of the reasonable use exception is to allow use of the parcel that would be allowed in all respects, otherwise in accordance with the requirements of all applicable development regulations of the city, provided that all reasonable measures to avoid and minimize impacts to any wetland areas or associated buffers are applied. And the applicant demonstrates that the project has been approved under all federal state regulatory programs applicable to the project. Any impacts to the wetland buffers must be compensated for through mitigation measures whereby onsite or offsite mitigation is imfeasible, or excuse me, where onsite or offsite mitigation is imfeasible, compensatory mitigation may be authorized pursuant to Ocean Shores Municipal Code nineteen dot oh two dot one fifty B. As indicated on the mitigation site plan dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, there are twenty-two hundred and seventy-six square feet of existing impacts with twenty-six hundred and fifteen square feet of total proposed impacts. The applicant is proposing to perform onsite restoration of existing impacts to the buffer, which was fourteen hundred and twenty-nine square feet, and purchase bank credits for the remaining impacts. Combined, the onsite mitigation and the compensatory mitigation will cover the obligation of the impacts. Standard of review for a consideration of a reasonable use, before any reasonable use permit can be granted, the hearing examiner must determine that A, the use applied for is either listed as a conditional use allowed in the district, or that it is significantly similar to one or more of the listed uses. Approval from the permit will substantially be consistent with the purpose of the district and applicable provisions of the comprehensive plan and will not adversely affect other uses and properties in the immediate vicinity. And also that the granting of the permit does not reduce the dimensional requirements of the district, and no nuisance to life, limb, or property will develop. The process to obtain a reasonable use exception shall be the same process and criteria applicable to a conditional use permit. And the criteria for the consideration of a conditional use, before any conditional use permit is granted, the hearing examiner must determine the follow that the use applied for is evil, either in the conditional use as allowed in the district, or that it is significantly similar, must approve, excuse me, approval of the permit will be substantially consistent with the purpose of the district and applicable provisions of the comprehensive plan and will not adversely affect other uses and properties in the immediate vicinity. Also, the granting of the permit does not reduce the dimensional requirements of the district, and no nuisance to life, limb, or property will develop. Code analysis of this proposal, the project would be allowed in an R one zone and would be permitted without condition as a single-family residence. The development would be substantially consistent with the purpose of the district and will not adversely affect other uses and properties in the immediate vicinity. From the Ocean Shores Municipal Code, this district is intended for low-intensity detached single-family dwellings in order to assure the maximum of light air, open space, privacy, and the protection of property values. Other uses should only be allowed if they are compatible with these values and consistent with the overall public interest. Where the proposed use appears to be consistent with the purpose of the district, A, the proposed site plan shall conform to all city standards. Approving the application would not reduce the dimensional requirements of the district, and there is no indication that allowing a single-family residence in this zone would create any nuisance to life, limb, or property. Should the hearing examiner approve this development, the planning department recommends conditions as listed in the addition to any conditions imposed by the hearing examiner. Number one, the construction must meet all current zoning, building construction, and fire code requirements. Installation of critical area fencing prior to clearing and site prep, erosion control measures shall also be required to keep sand or silk from blowing into the critical area or adjacent properties. And landscaping per Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen fifty-one hundred is shown on the plan submitted when the clearing and grading permit application. In addition, the buffer boundary that delineates the mitigated portion of the parcel and the non-mitigated portion of the parcel shall contain at the minimum a two-rail fence with minimum of one critical area habitat sign mounted on the fence per planning department approval. And also, they must execute a wetland or buffer mitigation plan that will compensate for impacts to the wetland buffer. And that will conclude the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I have a few questions for you, and it may be helpful to have the site plan available. I have that as my PDF page fifty-four in the packet that I received.
Okay.
Well, first, I guess, did, for the record, did city staff determine that this project is exempt from SEPA review as minor new construction?
Yes, as a single-family residential development, it is exempt from SEPA.
Great, thanks. And so I would like to, you address the conditional use criteria that's built into the Rue criteria, but I'd like to turn to the specific criteria under OSMC nineteen oh two oh ninety C one.
Right.
And I found it really helpful in our first Rue hearing to have a, you know, a short written analysis from city staff addressing those criteria. Would that be something you'd be willing to do again for this project? Doesn't have to be, but it's, I think it's good for the record. Thank you. Okay, and so I, in looking at the wetland report, it appears that it's the southeast corner of this property that contains the category-three wetland and the standard a hundred and fifty-foot buffer that that extends over the entirety of the property. Is that, is that your understanding?
That is my understanding.
So, any development on this property would be impossible absent a reasonable use exception?
That's correct.
And then my understanding also from the report is that there's a portion of this property that, of this onsite wetland buffer that's been previously degraded.
Yes, that is correct.
And that's the, so I'm looking at the site plan. That's this area kind of in the center and at the rear of the property that's surrounded by PCA?
Yes, that's correct. PCA indicates previously converted area of the wetland buffer.
Okay, I'll turn to other people that wish to testify. I just want to ask Mr. Reed some questions here. I don't want to get a lot of crosstalk, but you can provide some, some clarifications when it's your opportunity to testify. And so, Mr. Reed, is your, is it your understanding then this dark gray area, this is the area that's proposed to be restored as partial mitigation for these impacts?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just trying to gain an understanding. It looks like, is it Mr. Fromuth? I'm sorry, how to pronounce your name?
Yeah, pretty good.
Okay, well, let's, let's go ahead and let's get you sworn in. I, my understanding is you're the, the expert on this, so if you have some clarifications, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
Thank you. And can you state and spell your name for the record and explain your role with this project?
Christian Fromuth, C H R I S T I A N. Fromuth, F R O M U T H. I am with, I'm a consultant with Agua Tierra Land and Water Services, hydrology, soils, vegetation, thirty years in the field, and I, I was the primary author of the, of the wetlands report for this project.
Great, thank you. It looked like you had, you wanted to provide some clarification.
Just on the, the PCA area, prior converted area, as Marshall correctly stated, it is an odd-shaped, represented on the map, it is an odd-shaped polygon extending, including those darker gray, including three shaded, different shaded areas. The darker gray, which is the prior impacted, but not to be impacted during the current proposal, that darker gray is proposed for restoration onsite mitigation as part of the required mitigation sequencing. The light gray is a perimeter walkway, so that will not be, it, well, if convert, if, if it becomes impervious, then it will not be planted. If it's not impervious and maintained as a walkway, it would be a porous surface and afford little opportunity for mitigation in that area. The third color is the the building itself, and you can, if you look closely, the PCA polygon crosses through, underlies the building footprint for part of it. So, just, oh, and it also underlies part of the driveway, which would, is presumably impervious. That's all.
Okay, so real quick while I have you on there, and we'll, we'll give you a chance to testify further. So, was the, the sighting of this house and driveway that was kind of taken into account this previously converted area to minimize impacts?
Yes, thanks for asking that. The, the city code requires a process referred to as mitigation sequencing, where you first do your best to avoid impacts, then for unavoidable impacts, should unavoidable impacts persist, you do your best to minimize those impacts, and the third level of mitigation effort is for anything that, any residual remaining impacts must be mitigated in some way, either onsite or offsite. Yes, the house, the owner's original desired home plan was larger than this. This is a fairly modest-sized home and smaller than the average in the surrounding neighborhood. They reduced the size of the home. They also had wanted it to be centrally located in the lot, to be more distant from each property line. We guided them and they agreed to shift the footprint towards the northwest corner and directly up against the required city construction setback lines. That, so it's pushed the maximum for the, the structure in order to provide some buffer, some additional buffer to the wetland area. The house is also the, the current position of the house does is located more of the house, there's the way to say that, more of the house in this current position is located within the PCA, the prior converted area, than had it been in, in the other preferred location, so thereby reducing the, minimizing the impact.
Great, thank you, Mr. Fromuth. I'm gonna, I just have a couple more questions for Mr. Reed, and then we'll try circle back to, to you here. So, Mr. Reed, real quick, I'm just looking at the conditions here to make sure I don't have any questions about those. Okay, let's see here. So I guess I'm just looking at the site plan. It looks like there's a condition about some protective fencing. I'm just trying to see where that's located here. Okay. Oh, this FDS, this is where the protective fencing would be located?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And, okay, finally, Mr. Reed, just because I always ask, has the comprehensive plan or critical areas ordinance been amended since this application was deemed complete in a manner that would impact the proposal?
Oh, it has not.
Thank you. And do you have any other members of city staff that would like to testify today before I move to the applicant?
Not at this time.
Great, thank you. And so, let's, who do we have for the applicant? Is it Mr. Fromuth? Are you going to be testifying on behalf of the applicant?
Unmuting. Yes. And possibly Dean.
Okay, so, again, I guess if you just have anything else, I, I think I understand. I've reviewed the materials and looked at the site plan, but I think it would be helpful if you can, you know, just briefly describe the existing conditions of the site, you know, and the proposed development, and how the applicant would minimize and mitigate project impacts. You've touched on that already, but if you have anything you'd like to add?
Sure, thank you. Historically, the Ocean Shores Peninsula is a sand spit. Decades prior, I believe, fifties and sixties, it was substantially cleared and graded in preparation for a residential community. The, the water, the, the hydrology, which influences wetland development, has been radically transformed. The hydrology is driven by direct precipitation and groundwater. It's a sand dominant material throughout, so the the groundwater is a really substantial influencer on wetland systems. The, the lot, the subject lot is surrounded by what forensically appears to be offsite, not on the adjoining properties where homes are built, but in the wetland area to the, to the south. What appears to be borrow pits, location, areas where soil material was removed to, in order to locate it elsewhere during that phase of development. The, so all of that landscape was cleared and then graded. The subject parcel has also had a history of clearing and grading, but forensically difficult to with great confidence to discern boundaries and limitations. The vegetation has responded back and masking the, the land, the topography. So, the PCA area that's shown on this drawing was conservatively delineated. My presumption, and there were indicators onsite that the original converted area, prior converted area, was actually larger than what we're showing here. So, by no means are we overstating the amount of prior converted area for the parcel. The, and so there, and the notion behind the prior converted area is something that we've been exercising, but we're exercising on this parcel, and I guess you and I will talk about it again later today in another hearing. It shows up in different projects throughout Ocean Shores. So, the, the thought here is that the that, that it is a, that we don't want to avoid double jeopardy, basically, for folks that have already gone through, historically, the site has gone through the process for clearing and grading, and, and it's not virgin impacts. So we're hoping that the idea of seeking mitigation sequencing onsite to restore some of that prior converted area will be have, have bearing on the project and, and some accommodation to the landowner, and also simultaneously relieving some of the increased pressure on the finite mitigation bank, weather wax mitigation bank that the city owns is only has so many square feet of available area to provide as mitigation. And this site here, certainly by strategic management of the mitigation onsite can relieve some of the pressure on the weather wax. So that's a lot of overview content on this, but we have worked with the, the client, and they've been really accommodating to do whatever it takes to minimize, avoid and minimize impacts, do, perform what's called mitigation sequencing to limit limit impacts on the resource. Then I'll stop there.
Thank you, Mr. Fromuth, and so have, have you had a chance to review the conditions that were recommended by city staff in their report?
Myself? No, I, no, I've just been listening today to today's hearings.
Okay, is, is the applicant present? Are they, are they wanting to provide testimony today? If you happen to, if you happen to know.
Agua Tierra and there are, there are two contractors, Agua Tierra and Dean's Excavation, who provided agent function on behalf of the applicant and, and submitted the RU E application and been, been shepherding the process.
Okay, perhaps we can just quickly discuss the conditions. I just want to make sure that there would be no issue with those conditions recommended by city staff.
Okay.
With those, so first is a fairly standard condition that all construction has to, you know, meet the current zoning and building fire code requirements. The, the second condition refers to the the fencing that would be required and the erosion control measures that would be required during the project. The third condition refers to a landscaping plan. And it says, in addition, the buffer boundary that delineates the mitigated portion of the parcel and the non-mitigated portion of the partial, parcel shall contain at a minimum a two-rail fence with a minimum of one critical area habitat sign. with a minimum of one critical area habitat sign. And the fourth condition refers to the requirement for a final uh buffer mitigation plan.
Agua Tera agrees with all those uh conditions.
Okay, thank you very much. And do we have anyone else from the applicant team that would like to testify before we turn to you, members of the public?
Uh Peregrin, if I might?
Yes, please, Mr. Reed.
Um oh, um Christian and I have had discussions about um the the application of a two-rail fence versus um single post boundaries with the uh with the mitigation signage on it or the the critical area signage. And uh and I didn't indicate that the single post um fence would be allowed in uh in any of the mitigation plans that I've set forth. Uh mostly because I want to make sure that that we have adequate protection of the areas that we don't want access. But um but I am willing to make concessions in areas where it wouldn't make sense to have a full fence along there. And I I think I would like to leave that um as a as a condition that could be um formulated on site more as we see uh the development evolve.
Here's what I would suggest, Mr. Reed. How about at the end of this hearing? If you can get together with the applicant and work out if you want to revise these conditions in some way. Um and you can send those to me after the hearing. Uh I'm already, you know, I'm requesting that uh narrative on the criteria anyway, and we can discuss the timelines and logistics of that, you know, before we conclude this hearing, but does that sound like a good idea? Maybe you can get together and send final revised recommended conditions to me?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Reed, do we have anyone in the uh the room from the public that would like to testify today?
Anybody in in the room here present? Like to testify?
On this first matter?
Okay, not at this time.
Okay, and so I'm looking at who we have on Zoom here. Um I see first a Dennis Glin Glininsky, I'm sorry if I butchered your name. Would you like to provide testimony at this first hearing? Okay, I'm so he's shaking his head no. Um and then I have uh a name that starts with a a V, it says Turner in there. Uh you're on you're on mute, you can unmute yourself.
I'm Randy Turner. I'm I'm number three on your docket today.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just paying attention because I've never seen any of these. It's fascinating.
Great, well, we'll get we'll get to you later today. And then I have uh Jeff Malahan. I assume he's with Wetland Resources on the third matter as well, but.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. And then I have uh John Fleming. I assume he's here for the next matter, but if you'd like to provide testimony on this one.
That's correct, and thank you. Um I don't wish to provide testimony on this first docket item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fleming. We'll get to you. And last, I see uh someone named Brian on the Zoom.
Uh hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Uh just a a interested member of the public. I don't wish to testify.
Okay, thank you for being here today. Uh so uh seeing as there's no members of the public that would like to testify, I'll go back to Marshall and uh see if you have any uh last thoughts from the city. On this first.
No, not at this time. I think we've presented all the uh the evidence and, you know, supporting documentation that we have at this point.
Okay, thank you. And so um turning to that uh request to submit, you know, uh again, a short narrative on that RU criteria, would the end of Friday be enough time for you to do that? Keeping in mind, I'm gonna probably ask you to do the same for these other two matters.
Yeah, I I think I can provide all three probably by Friday.
Okay, thank you. And then again, if you want to work out with the uh the applicant uh a revision of these recommended conditions, you can submit that by Friday as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And um anything else from Mr. Fromm before we turn to the next matter?
Sorry, unmuting. Uh no, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, um with that, I will um close this first matter. Uh anyone who is here for that, you're you're welcome to stay, but you need not stay if you have other things to do today. And uh I think, Mr. Reed, are we ready to proceed with the next matter?
Uh yep, I believe we are. I I have a question in the room.
Just just a quick one on my way out. Is there, can we request a copy?
For the next matter we have on the agenda today, it's uh number RU twenty-three oh oh three. A request for a reasonable use exception to allow for the development of a single-family residence that would result in five thousand four hundred and eighty-three square feet of impacts, and I understand there may be a clarification on that. Um to a buffer associated with a category one wetland on an approximately twelve thousand three hundred and forty-five square foot lot located at two oh seven Sand Dune Avenue Southwest. The exhibits I received and review and reviewed in advance of the hearing for this matter include the application and project plans. A wetland report and buffer mitigation plan prepared by Agua Tera. The staff report prepared by city staff and various notice materials, and I will go ahead and admit these exhibits into the record. Should anyone have any additional exhibits they would like admitted into the record, please let me know when it is your opportunity to testify. And I will go ahead and address admitting additional exhibits at that time. With that, I believe we can get started, Mr. Reed. You are still under oath, so you may begin your presentation when you are ready.
Okay, very similar to the last uh last proposal. This is a an application for a reasonable use ex- exception. Uh RU twenty-three dash oh oh three submitted on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. And the purpose is uh for a reasonable use exception to authorize impacts to a wetland buffer only for a single-family residential build in an R-one zone. Uh the applicant uh's name is John Fleming. Um the address of the proposed site is two oh seven Sand Dune Avenue Southwest on a parcel uh size of twelve thousand three hundred and forty-five square feet. We have a um a initial proposed impact of five thousand four hundred and eighty-three square feet. The existing condition of this parcel is an R-one, single-family zoned piece of property, um not in a shoreline jurisdiction with a category one interdunal wetland consisting of a buffer uh width of two hundred and twenty-five uh feet in length. Um the surrounding conditions, um basically, all the way around this piece of property is uh R-one zone. Um except for the west is the uh Pacific Ocean. Land use designation, single-family residential land use designation, all the way around to the west, we have uh a designation of parks and recreation uh by the comprehensive plan. The existing land use is single-family residence to the north, a single-family residence to the south, and a vacant undeveloped property to the east. And to the west, the uh dunes and the Pacific Ocean. Background on this property, the subject property is addressed to two oh seven Sand Dune Avenue Southwest is located in the southwest quadrant of Ocean Shores. The closest intersecting road is roughly seven hundred and seventy-seven feet south at Polaris Boulevard Southwest. The property is zoned R-one and is located in the single-family residential zone. The uh zoning in the immediate vicinity is exclusively R-one and impacting the lot for single-family dwelling is a permitted use in this district. Um similar to the other proposal, um notices were sent out to those within three hundred feet of the proposed project on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Or indicating uh this hearing to be conducted on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three uh starting at ten o'clock. On May fourth, as required by Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen fifty-two oh ninety. Um also, the hearing information was also made available at the City of Ocean Shores website, um oh WWW dot O S gov dot com. The notice of the public hearing was provided to the Daily World newspaper for publications in the uh May ninth and May eleventh editions. Staff has determined that this proposed development is listed as a permitted use as defined in Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen sixteen oh twenty A. Wetland buffers exist on this parcel and the surrounding parcels, which will require a reasonable use exception to impact any wetland or its associated buffer. The purpose of the RU is to allow use of the parcel that would be allowed as and as in all respects otherwise in accordance with the requirements of all applicable development regulations of the city. Provided that all reasonable measures to avoid and minimize impacts to any wetland areas or associated buffers are applied. And the applicant demonstrates that the project has been approved under all federal and state regulatory prog- programs applicable to the project. Um any impacts to the wetland buffer must be compensated for through mitigation measures. Where onsite or offsite mitigation is infeasible, compensatory mitigation may be authorized for Ocean Shores Municipal Code nineteen oh two one fifty B. As shown on the mitigation site plan dated twelve twenty-seven twenty twenty-two, and it's my understanding that we're gonna have some revisions to these numbers. Um the project proposes to impact forty-five hundred and sixty-six square feet of wetland buffer only avoiding any impacts to the wetland directly. Um significant portions of the buffer identified in areas M-one, M-two, and M-three are being left undisturbed and demonstrate minimization of impacts to the buffer of the wetland. Uh the process to obtain a reasonable use exception should be the same process and criteria applicable to a conditional use permit. Um in seventeen fifty-two oh fifty, these are the conditions for criteria consideration of a conditional use. Before any conditional use permit is granted, the hearing examiner must determine the following. The use applied for is either listed in the conditional uses allowed in the district or that it is significantly similar to one or more of the listed uses. Approval of the permit will be substantially consistent with the purpose of the district and applicable provisions of the comprehensive plan. It will not adversely impact other users and properties in the immediate vicinity. Also, granting of the permit does not reduce the dimensional requirements of the district, and no nuisance to life, limb, or property will develop. Um in the code analysis, the project would be allowed outright in an R-one zone if it had no uh wetland or buffer impacts as a single-family residence. Those are listed as permitted uses, and the development will be substantially consistent with the purpose of the district. And not adversely impact other uses and properties in the immediate vicinity. The uh the R-one zone district is intended for low-density detached, single-family dwellings in order to assert the maximum of light, air, open space, privacy, and the protection of property values. Other uses should only be allowed if they are compatible with these values and consistent with the overall public interest. Where the proposed use appears consistent with the purpose of the district. The proposed site plan shall conform to all city standards approving the application. And approving the application would not reduce the dimensional requirements of the district. And there is no indication that allowing this single-family residence in the zone, in this zone, would create any nuisance to life, limb, or property. Um should the hearing examiner approve this development, the planning department recommends conditions as listed in addition to any conditions imposed by the hearing examiner. Uh condition number one would be, construction must meet all current planning and zoning and building uh, excuse me. Construction must meet all current planning, zoning, building, construction, and fire code requirements. And number two would be to craft and execute a wetland buffer mitigation plan that will compensate for impacts to wetland buffer. This plan shall include delineation fencing and signage that will protect the unmitigated critical area during and after construction activities are complete. And that uh that will conclude the staff report for this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. And uh so just again for the record, uh I assume city city staff determine that this project is uh exempt from SEPA as minor new construction?
It is.
Thank you. And then um so I have a few questions for you, and you know, this is a fairly informal process. So, Mr. Fromm, if you have, if you want to chime in uh while I'm questioning Mr. Reed, I think that would actually be helpful. Um so in looking at the wetland report for this project, uh it appears that it's the the western portion of the subject property contains a category one interdunal wetland. And that has a standard two hundred and twenty-five foot buffer and which extends over the entirety of this property. Is is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. And then, so again, the development of this property would be impossible absent a a reasonable use exception.
Also correct, yes, yeah.
Thank you. Um and there's no development proposed within the wetland itself?
Correct.
Um, okay, let's see. And as with the previous property, there's been some previous degradation to the wetland buffer.
Yes, um clearing, grading, filling, um all present have been have occurred. The um submittal uh the the wetland submittal includes some aerial, uh an effort to provide aerial photo history that shows clearing. Some of the um resolution quality is not great on some of the older shots. Um so by reference to some of the new new newer shots, one can compare polygons and get a sense of history. Um in addition, um quite valuable are uh some permit history documents that have reflected uh clearing clearing, grading, filling for um a driveway. Um and also for what appears to have been a camping area, um which is uh overlaps, uh a historic camping area, which is prior converted area overlapping proposed new construction or under underlaying, if you will.
Yes, and so it appears that, you know, again, like the the sighting of this home and and particularly the the driveway that would be utilized to access the home. Had that in mind, that that previous clearing looks like the driveway is all located or the first part of the driveway is all located within that PCA.
Correct.
Okay. And uh let's see here. And then my understanding is some of the minimization efforts were designing this home as a a two-story home.
Yes.
Reducing the footprint of the the building.
Correct, um locating the porch um on the side of the home rather than on the water side of the hot home, which is um affords less of a a view of the uh of the uh to the west, the more desired view.
Yeah, and it appears, looking at, I'm I'm sorry, looking at the site plan, it also looks like this this home would be set back further uh than the the neighboring homes.
Yes, the um jurisdictions um tech common typically have a common line setback guidance for shorelines. Um and the the uh Ocean Shores uh and I should qualify this, uh my understanding of the Ocean Shores um shoreline management program uh is that it is um more silent on that topic. Um however, this is also uh there there are some uh I I think Marshall can probably speak to this better than I, but there's some operational policies that that are in place and then some stand and some standards that apply, but this this home is um certainly respecting those guidelines.
Mr. Reed, did you have anything to add to that?
Um yeah, so I've I've consulted um these these western lots along the City of Ocean Shores um typically have what the real estate market has priced as the most valuable views in town. And uh you know, the price of these lots reflect that. And so um I've I've consulted with the Department of Ecology to try to come up with some reasonable accommodation for owners on this western side to not have to shove these houses all the way up against the street-side setback. Um basically eliminating uh a view that they paid a premium to obtain. And so a a reasonable um amount of view rather than going with a straight common line was to go with a forty-five degree uh angle from each of the properties or developed structures on either side of those. Uh, angle from each of the properties or developed structures on either side of those. Uh, to still afford some view um, to to the new development.
That's what I thought this was. So so would it be fair to characterize this as uh, the sighting of this home as. Setting it back as far as feasible from the wetland while maintaining some some views.
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
That's the thought that was in mind with the proposed sighting here.
Yeah, and and that uh. You know, part of the discussion with ecology is. Because we're not using common line, that adds to the the concept of minimization to impacts in this buffer. Um, while still affording some reasonable view uh for the owner.
Great, thank you. And then I'm gonna turn to Mr. From Frometh here in a minute to maybe go through this site plan in a little more detail, but. Um. Again, standard question, has the comprehensive plan or critical areas ordinance been amended since this application was deemed complete? In a manner that would impact the proposal?
No, it has not.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. And are there any other members of city staff that would like to testify before I move to the applicant's expert?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, great. Mr. Frometh, and you're still you're still under oath. So if there's anything you'd like to add. Um. And you know, particularly looking at the site plan, kind of just explaining for me and members of the public that are interested. Uh, you know, the minimization measures and the mitigation that would take place.
Mm hmm. Sure, thank you. Um. Mitigation, I'll start with again mitigation sequencing um, per code, it requires that. Um, a property that. Um, is confined or constrained by natural re- protected resources, in this case, wetland and wetland buffer. Um, exercise demonstrate efforts to avoid. Minimize and then mitigate for any uh adverse impacts to the resource. And in that order. Um. Avoidance on this site uh. Um, was. Successful with respect to the wetland. Um, not uh avoidance was impossible with respect to the buffer. The a hundred percent of the property is encumbered by either wetland or buffer. Preferentially, um. The all all proposed improvements were located within buffer and not wetland. The um. For, well, for a variety of reasons, but certainly consistent with mitigation sequencing. Um. The. Uh. So the the further minimization of impacts to the buffer. Um, were to locate. The home uh to retreat the home from the common line from the from the wetland. Um, because the. Universally, the more valued portion of a buffer is that which is located closest to the wetland. So the the home was retreated. Uh, from the wetlands to afford um, leaving. Buffer, some portion of the buffer intact. The um. The size of the home was reduced that as you you, as the hearing examiner referenced, it's a two story home. So instead of spreading the footprint out and increasing the impact footprint. The home is taller. Um, the porch is located to the side, not towards the to the west, towards the wetland. The. Um. Uh, fire code um calls for protective measures. Um, fire defensible space around structures. The um, and there's a uh, I believe that and Marshall perhaps can help out here, but I believe it's twenty feet. Uh, minimum is is the working uh. Distance, the me- measurement for the width of that defensible space. In this diagram, if we start from the west and move towards the east. The first line uh is a WL, that's the wetland edge. On the in the inner donal, then there's a gray zone. Uh, without hatching, that's an existing buffer, no entry zone. And then there's a lot solid line going across that has BF on it, that is buffer fence. Um, and then the hatching within that area. Is the the fire defense, well, everything between buffer fence and the home, the building is fire defensible space. The hatching refers to. Um, fire defen- defensible space that is not in the buffer. But it is um proposed for native native buffer vegetation in that zone. Um. So it's further, a further mitigating measure, uh minimization of impact. Um, that vegetation would be non woody um, to observe fire defense. Uh, ground cover material. Um. The next, yeah, and so that's everything with that uh gray color and the hatching. Um, is the uh non woody fire defensible space um vegetation guidance. Um, the next.
Real quick, uh, so just so I'm understanding this correctly, so there's gonna be. Vegetation there that's gonna provide some ecological benefit for the wetland, it's just. Certain types of vegetation, woody vegetation is.
Yeah, ground, non woody, non woody and um ground. Cover material, um, for example, kynikinik, which is a uh. Uh, an evergreen, it's a, it's an ivy like plant, but it's uh, it has an evergreen leaf and it's native and it. Provides uh habitat, food food value.
Okay.
Wildlife. Um, it does that, is that clear?
Yeah, thank you, I just wanted to.
So the um. The next line moving to the next shading texture moving to the east is uh walkway. Um, that surrounds the the home, maintenance access walkway area. Um, then there's the home and the porch. Um, then you emerge on the other side and it's uh more of the same textures other than the um, the driveway. And then the um. The. Uh, it's not. Called. Uh, well, it's called out in one location and then understood that. Viewers will. Assume elsewhere, the buffer fence. Um. Surrounds the um. The fire defensible space. Um, and it also, um, in this situation that uh. Um. Well. I guess re- re- backing up a little bit. Um, that west of the buffer fence that's shown on the drawing is that. That gray shaded area without a hatch. That's existing buffer of good quality and it's a no entry zone. Um, the same. Uh. Type of area exists on the other side of the house because the buffer on this property extends all the way and the entire property.
Yeah.
Um, and per code or per ecology guidance, buffers stop at a road. So the buffer goes all the way to the road here, goes off parcel here. Um, but the driveway is is cut through, it's an impact area and they're surrounding it is buffer, no entry. And that would also receive. Fence boundary uh guidance, and that's an example of a conversation that Marshall referred to earlier about. Continue the the choice. Sorting out the choice of a two rail continuous fence versus. Uh, standalone fence posts as a certain density equipped with signage. Um, that would. Uh, had um. Uh, sorry, I'm working on two different screens here and one just went blank, okay, um, I'm back. The. So that uh bordering the driveway would be fencing um to separate the existing buffer, no entry area.
That was gonna be my next question, thank you.
All right, good. Um. Yep, and uh. I I guess that and that covers the the full parcel then, um, so I'll pause there, um, any questions?
Yeah, just quickly, so it looks like on this parcel. It has a more limited area for restoration, is that just this area? Kind of uh, north central of the driveway. This area within the PCA. That's not gonna be developed, is that the area that's gonna be restored as?
Yeah, the um, the hatching. The 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 gray with hatching air texture.
That that entire areas.
Yeah, it wraps it sort of a horseshoe, if you will, around the house and and interrupted by the driveway.
And then any mitigation that can't be performed on site, they uh, there's gonna be purchase of credits from the uh. City's wetland mitigation.
That's right, and that is the proposed mitigation strategy. So Marshall referenced in his presentation that there are some updates to the numbers, the calculations. The um, if we can go back to the executive summary, um, of page three, I think, of the wetland report.
Okay. Give me one second here. Yes.
Yeah, I'm I too, I'm navigating there, um. Let's see, on page. Um, on page three, the proposed impacts uh section begins and it continues to page four. I'll direct you to page four, mitigation strategy, some uh, the the areas that are in yellow highlight. Um, those uh. Those numbers I have updated, I I have numbers to insert into the X and the Y. Uh, locations. Uh, can I give those to you now?
Yeah, well, you can, you can uh state those for the record, if you could provide. Those to uh Marshall after the hearing, he'll make sure I get those and I could admit those in exhibit as an exhibit as well.
Thank you, I um, so I I sent the um. So they'll come in two forms, one in in a narrative. Um, but two in a an updated site plan, the one, the site plan that I just walked you through. Um, is dated uh, May fourth and the revised one is dated May eighth.
Right.
So, and that reflects new numbers, the um, so verbally. Those, the onsite restore approximately XX square feet of uh of prior converted, that XX is. Uh, one thousand four hundred and ninety seven square feet.
Okay.
And the um, offsite and the balance. Due to atone for all the sins of the mitigation requirements, um. Offsite buffer mitigation bank credit purchase approximately YYY square feet, that number there. Is two thousand three hundred and fifty nine square feet remaining.
Okay, and what I, looking at the site plan, it looked like the. The required ratio is a case by case basis, it says, would you?
Yeah, that for a um, for a ca- because this is a category. Uh, it, well, it's buffer that's being impacted and it's the buffer of a category one. Uh, wetland. Um, and our proposal. Um, here, because of the prior converted area nature of this buffer. This is not um virgin buffer. Um, it's um. It it's been cleared, it's historically cleared and graded as the permit history will reflect as and. The aerial photos, so our proposal is to. Um. Matt, to provide a one to one buffer uh exchange ratio rather than something higher than that.
And, Mr. Reed, is that something the city has reviewed? And is on board with, or is that something that needs to be worked out still?
And no, we we have looked at that and um, and and we're agreeable to that ratio.
So my understanding, even though it's a, it's a category one wetland, because it's. The the nature of the existing buffer that's gonna be impacted. A simple one to one ratio would be sufficient.
Yeah, I. Uh, based on my rudimentary understanding, I believe that to be the case, yes.
And I I would, I would back up Marshall on his understanding there and um, as a. Perhaps a useful reference here in this situation is a policy that Department of Ecology. implements when it comes to. Calculating exte- the ratio, the mitigation ratios. Um, for. Uh. What they refer to as indirect impacts when a when a wetland is also is actually impacted and.
Yeah.
Um. And and one loses the buffering value, but for uh that. Occurs when you encroach into the wetland. The the mitigation ratio that is calculated is discretionary and it's based on. The existing condition of the impacted portion of the buffer. So if it was a virgin buffer. The mitigation ratio would be high. If it was, I mean, it was like a climax forest, if it was a cow pasture, it would be low. Um, this is not a cow pasture, but it nor is it a a spruce, uh coastal spruce forest. So. It it's there, there is um discretionary. Uh, liberty there.
Thank you, Mr. Frometh, I think I understand that, uh, is there anything else, uh? Any other information you'd like to provide?
I I, no, I have nothing, um, and I'll collaborate with Marshall on the uh updates. Um.
And then.
And the conditions as well, yeah.
Okay, and then, yeah, I was gonna, that that's where I was gonna go next was. These appear to be similar conditions if if. You would like to work those, any revisions to those out with uh, Mr. Reed, you can submit those to me by the end of the day Friday. Along with that um, narrative that you're gonna provide.
Yeah.
Mr. Reed, thank you. Uh, is there anyone else from the applicant team that would like to uh testify before we turn to the public? I see we have uh. Mr. Fleming here, if you would like to provide any information or comments.
Um, I don't wish to testify because um I'm in uh agreement with um, Mr. Frometh's findings.
Great, thank you for being here, Mr. Fleming. Uh, Mr. Reed, do we have anyone in the room that would like to testify for this matter?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Hey, I'm gonna again go through Zoom, Mr. Galit Galit Glenninsky, sorry, I keep putting your name. Would you like to testify for this matter? I I can't, you're on, you're on mute. No, no, okay, thank you. And then again, we have Ms. Turner and uh, Mr. Malahan, I think they're here for the third matter, but if you'd like to. Provide any comments or testimony, now's your opportunity on this matter.
Yeah, that's correct, no- nothing for me.
Okay. And then the the last person we have, uh, Brian, if you would like to.
Uh, no, no testimony.
Okay, thank you. Um, so uh, with that, I will. Go back to to Mr. Reed, do you have any last thoughts on the city before uh? On behalf of the city before we turn to our final matter today?
Nope, I do not.
Okay, and then just to clarify, uh, for this matter, I'm gonna go ahead and leave the record open until the end of the day Friday, so you can submit that. Um, narrative on the root criteria and any uh proposed revisions to the recommended conditions.
Yep, I'll have that to you by Friday.
Great, thank you. I wanna thank everyone for attending the second matter if uh. You, you're welcome to stay for our final matter, but if uh you free to leave if you have other things to do. And uh, Mr. Reed, whenever you're ready, we can, we can begin the the last matter for today.
Okay.
Okay. So the the final matter we have on the agenda today is uh number RU E twenty three oh oh four. Uh, which is a request for a reasonable use exception to allow for the development of a single family residence. That would result in two thousand six hundred and fifty two square feet of impacts. To a buffer associated with a category two wetland on an approximately ten thousand two hundred square foot lot located at six thirty two. Duck Lane Drive Northeast. I received and reviewed several exhibits for this matter in advance of the hearing, which include the application and project plans. A wetland report and mitigation plan prepared by Wetland Resources. The staff report prepared by city staff and various notice materials. And I will go ahead and admit those exhibits into the record. Should anyone have any additional exhibits they would like admitted into the record, please let me know when it is your opportunity to testify. And I will go ahead and address admitting additional exhibits at that time. Uh, with that, Mr. Reed, you are still under oath, so you may begin your presentation whenever you are ready.
Okay, thank you. Um, this is our third request today for reasonable use exception. Uh. The uh, request number is RU E twenty three dash zero zero four. Uh, date submitted April fourth, twenty twenty three. The purpose is uh, an application for a reasonable use exception to authorize impacts to a wetland buffer only. For a single family residence in an R one zone. And uh. Actually, um I need to make a correction, uh this is not in an R one zone, this is in an R six C zone. There's an error on my staff report. And the applicant's name is uh Mister Randy Turner from Federal Way, Washington, and the address of this proposal is six thirty two. Duck Lake Drive Northeast, that's in Division five A. Uh lot number forty nine. The lot size is ten thousand two hundred square feet and the proposed impacts of uh two thousand six hundred and fifty two. Uh square feet uh is in the proposal. The existing conditions uh as corrected, um the zoning for this parcel is R six C. Land use is mobile home and manufactured housing. And uh. The shoreline designation along this area is the Grace Harbor Estuary. And the wetland categorization is a category two S drain wetland with a buffer width of a hundred and ten feet. Um. The surrounding conditions, all surrounding properties are zoned R six C. Uh that exists to the north and to the south, to the east of this parcel. Are the shorelines of Grace Harbor and to the west is another R six C uh development. The land use designation uh from the comprehensive plan. Is um. Mobile home and manufactured housing or houses or for parcels to the north, south and west. And to the east uh is designated parks and recreation open land. The existing land use um to the north is a single family residence, to the south is a vacant undeveloped piece of property. The uh. The east of this property is shorelines of Grace Harbor and to the west is a vacant undeveloped parcel. The background, the property is addressed at six thirty two Duck Lake Drive Northeast is located in the northeast quadrant of Ocean Shores. The closest intersecting road is roughly five hundred feet south at Ozette Street. The property is zoned R six C and is located in the modified mobile home zone. The zoning in the immediate vicinity is exclusively R sixty and impacting the lot for single family dwelling is permitted is a permitted use in this zone. Um. Again, notices for this hearing uh dated May seventeenth, twenty twenty three. Were sent out to owners within three hundred feet of the subject property on May fourth, as required by Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen fifty two oh ninety. Um the hearing information was also made available on the City of Ocean Shores website. And the notice of the public hearing was provided to the Daily World Newspaper for publications in the May ninth and May eleventh uh additions. Staff has determined that this uh development project is listed as a permitted use in the uh Ocean Shores Municipal Code. Uh seventeen twenty seven oh twenty A. Uh wetland buffers exist on this parcel and the surrounding parcels, which require an approved application of a reasonable use exception. To be able to impact any wetlands or its associated buffer. The purpose of the Rue is to allow use of the parcel that would. That would be allowed and is in all respects otherwise in accordance with the requirements of all applicable development regulations of the city. Provided that all reasonable measures to avoid and minimize impact to the to any wetland or associated buffers are applied. And the applicant demonstrates the project has been approved under all federal, state and regulatory programs applicable to the project. Um any impacts to the wetland buffers must be compensated for through mitigation measures. Where onsite or offsite mitigation is imfeasible, compensatory mitigation may be authorized. Pursuant to Ocean Shores Municipal Code nineteen oh two one fifty B. Uh the standard of review for reasonable use exception. As in the other ones are uh. Applicable are the same conditions of. Applicable to a conditional use permit. Um in seventeen fifty two oh fifty, criteria for the condition. Consideration of a conditional use before any conditional use permit is granted. The hearing examiner must determine the following. Um a use applied for is either listed in the conditional uses allowed in the district or that it is significantly similar to one or more of the listed uses. Approval for the permit will be substantially consistent with the purpose of the district and applicable provisions of the comprehensive plan. And will not adversely impact other uses and properties in the immediate vicinity. Granting of the permit would not reduce the dimensional requirements of the district and no nuisance to life limb or property will develop. In the code analysis, this project would be allowed in an RC uh an R six C zone. Per Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen twenty seven oh thirty. Um listing permitted uses as follows, public and semi-public uses as provided in seventeen fifty oh forty. Uh. These are from. Another hearing. So I'm gonna revise this and I will forward this as a part of my revision um. With Friday's documents, if that's um acceptable to the hearing examiner.
That's great.
Okay, and then also the development must be substantially consistent with the purpose of the district and will not adversely affect other uses and properties. In the immediate vicinity and um. This district is intended for low density detached, single family dwellings in order to shore ensure. Maximum of light air, open space, privacy and the protection of property values, other uses should only be allowed if they're compatible with these values. And consistent with the overall public interest. Where the public where the proposed use appears consistent with the purpose of the district. The proposed site plan shall conform to all city standards, approving the application would not reduce the dimensional requirements of the district. And there is no indication that allowing this single family residence in this zone would create any nuisance to life limb or property. Uh a recommendation, should the hearing examiner approve this development, your planning department recommends conditions as listed. Uh in addition to any conditions imposed by the hearing examiner. Uh condition number one, construction must meet all current planning, zoning, building, construction and fire code requirements. And condition number two would be to craft and execute a wetland buffer mitigation plan. That will compensate for impacts to wetland buffer. The plan shall include delineation fencing and signage that will protect the unmitigated critical area during and after construction activities are complete. And uh and that'll conclude the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Reed, and uh before I turn to uh my questions for you, I thought it was. Uh pretty effective having the the expert available for clarifications on our last matters, so uh Mister Malahan. If I'm saying that correctly, uh I assume you're here on behalf of the applicant. You're on mute right now.
I am, yeah, just unmute myself.
Would you mind that? That if I go ahead and swear you in, so you're available to answer any questions or provide any clarification? Okay, great, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony that you give here today?
I do.
Thank you, and can you state and spell your name for the record and explain your role with this project?
Yeah, Jeff Malahan, uh. J E F F M A L L A H A N, uh I work as a. Senior ecologist at Well and Resources. Um I'm the consulting biologist on the project um and worked with Randy uh on this for a number of years now, so.
Great. Thank you, so feel free to chime in if there's any clarifications while I'm uh asking Mr. Reed questions here, so first and I know this is repetitive. Uh Mr. Reed, but just for the record, so we have it on the record, did uh city staff determine that this project is exempt from super review as minor new construction?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, um and so uh. Looking at the, it appears that this project uh is also gonna result in some impacts to shoreline vegetation. And would require mitigation under the city shoreline master program, I just wanna be clear that that. That's not an issue that I'm reviewing with as part of this Rue request, am I correct?
Um. No, it's not.
Okay.
At this time.
Okay, I just wanted to to make sure um. And okay, so in looking at the wetland report for this project. And it may be helpful to look at the, I have a conceptual site plan map at uh. PDF fifty three in my packet. Um it appears that. There's a category two wetland. On the eastern portion of this property. And that has a standard hundred and ten foot buffer extending over. A large portion, but not the entirety of this property, is that your understanding?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you, and then um. Perhaps you can tell me just a little bit about the proposed sighting of the residents within the buffer area, is this?
Yeah.
Generation of required setbacks, view impacts.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you 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 kind of, that that was the initial requirement is is maintaining the the uh driveway setback and uh setbacks. From the road there as a requirement of the of the municipal code for ocean shores, so we cited that the house. Kind of as far away as from the critical area as possible and we're avoiding. Um you know, following the avoidance criteria um as previously discussed in in other matters here today. Um by reducing uh you know, the location of the house uh as far away as we can from the from the from the wetland. Um and then providing, you know, compensatory mitigation uh with. The mitigation bank, um and then our additional. Um requirement to to restore shoreline vegetation, again, that that's kind of part of the process, but we're I guess we're not gonna be reviewing that today. Uh but yeah, the this the house itself um is maintaining a modest modest footprint, um I believe it's fifteen hundred square feet or fifteen hundred and two square feet. Oh and in the end, we had some minor modifications to the plan um. Prior to uh this this file, so metal, we we did have a uh previous iteration of of this same site plan with. Um. Even less buffer impact, but in talking to city staff and reviewing the plans with Marshall, um this. Final proposal um kind of reflects more of reality, uh we kind of had just a five foot setback off of the building footprint um before, but. But in order to maintain that area, um we kind of determined that it it's gonna make more sense over time for the for the lifespan of the of the property. To mitigate for kind of all of the impacts up to the property lines instead of just. Just the the surrounding area around the footprint of the structure. Um and so that's why this this new kind of uh mitigation area was expanded to four thousand square feet. Um but yeah, that is kind of the basis of the proposal.
And okay, so um just so I'm understanding, it's. This driveway, is this the minimum setback or is it? In consideration of the setback plus other.
Yeah, correct, yeah, that's that's my understanding, based on the uh.
And then um so the. I'm looking at that conceptual site plan, this, the. Hatched area, this would be remain protected.
Correct.
The dash line, is there gonna be some kind of, I'm sorry, this is, I had three of these projects on the same day, so.
Yeah.
Just trying to recall, is there gonna be some some fencing, some protective fencing or other measures, okay?
Right, so we had um I spoke with Marshall about this kind of um. Starting to require, you know, critical area fencing or some type of barrier. Uh to prevent intrusion into the into the regulated buffer areas and and this the city has been coming up with kind of this requirement to do either fencing or. Uh signs and posts, um I had talked. In some detail with Marshall about potentially uh alternatives. That would look like uh barrier plantings, you know, um Hawthorne and Rose and some type of um thorny barrier planting in the edge to. Uh prevent intrusion that would would act as a natural fence and that still provide wildlife transfer transport to the area. Um so i- in in the end, as part of the condition, and we we did review the 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 conditions of the approval, um there will be some. Um requirement to have a demarcated kind of barrier there, uh either with fence or or something similar.
And then, and maybe you explain this, uh but just so I'm entirely clear, the. Within this, so this four thousand seven square foot area, that's this entire like pink area and what appears. What would be the building footprint, is that?
Yeah, yeah, so that's a representation of the of the building footprint itself, that actually is shown as larger than the final, uh that's shown as sixteen hundred sixty. Square feet and the the final building footprint, I I believe is fifteen oh two, so it's gonna be reduced a little bit, but we we are maintaining that that. Um kind of buffer impact area um in order to. Demarcate where the edge of the building envelope and and kind of the impact area would be and then mitigate for that entire thing with the with the mitigation bank.
And then the remaining pink area that would be maintained is lawn area.
Yeah, lawn lawn patio, or if there is uh the desire for the applicant to to um enhance that. Um with native trees or or fruit trees, there was uh some desire to do that initially.
And there. There's no ar- area available on this parcel for in kind mitigation, is that correct?
So. We, so there what? This kind of notion of this previously, you know, uh disturbed area, um you know. When we started this project, that wasn't really uh something that had come across the planning desk and we hadn't had formal kind of um, you know, recommendations from the city. On that, and so it seems that um Christian um thankfully has has kind of gone through that that process a little bit with the city and so. In this case, there would be an opportunity to do restoration and reduce the use of the mitigation bank. Um and we can certainly in 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 the end, provide a revised final mitigation. Uh plan that would provide that would do that, um we we have the option to do that, but also we're gonna be restoring. Um vegetation as a as part of the shoreline management requirement for for reve- revegetation. Um so that would eliminate uh two thousand square feet of that area, but there is there is. Other area that can be restored if if we need to go down that route. Um but the the reason we were using weather wax was because um that that was not clear in the code. Um and so in this approach, we're fully mitigating, you you know, with with the impacts that we have.
So that would be something that you could potentially revise and submit with a.
Yeah, and right, and as a right, and as a condition of approval, um as Marshall stated, there there is a, you know, the final mitigation plan. Uh needs to be reviewed and approved, and so that would that could be reflected in that final mitigation plan.
Yeah, and I I don't I don't have any issue with that, I guess for. My purposes of at this kind of more conceptual stage, I just want to. Ensure that full mitigation would be feasible in some form, either. In kind compensatory or.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Great, absolutely. Thank you, um let's see what other questions I have here, um. Um and maybe you spoke to this, I'm just gonna continue with you, um. There was some um consideration about minimizing impacts through the the site and building design, if maybe you can just touch on that. And so, okay.
Yeah, exactly, we 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 did follow the the avoidance criteria, which is to. To basically avoid impacts as much as we can, and we did that through avoiding wetland impacts, the. You know, the the wetland boundary does does enter the the property, um surrounding property development. Uh also have encroached closer to the wetland boundary itself and the shoreline area there, and so we're we're. We're avoiding those impacts by pulling the structure back as far as possible, while respecting the required setbacks and and driveway approaches that the city. Uh needs, um and then, you know, additionally reducing our impacts uh with a modest sized footprint, um and then. Lastly, providing mitigation with with uh through through the wood wax mitigation thing.
And then my understanding, uh because this is a uh. What is it, a category two wetland, any compensatory mitigation would be at the one point two to one ratio?
So we had, so again, this was previous kind of uh um. The previous plans that have now kind of adapted, so our original ratio was one point two. Um we have since spoken with the city and um was requested to provide one to one. Uh for buffer impacts, again, similar to what Christian has described, this site was previously disturbed. Uh so if you're looking at historical aerials, it was previously cleared, and so we're falling back to the one to one ratio that was um kind of recommended by the city.
And Mr. Reed, can you confirm that the? The city uh would be okay with that one to one for any compensatory mitigation? I I know you haven't reviewed the final mitigation plan, but.
Yeah, no, um a- and and I'd like to provide a little clarification on on what is an evolving process. Um as it as it pertains to these um previously. Converted areas, um. The uh I had not considered that in the initial discussions with either uh with Jeff or Christian. Um or any of the other delineations that have been done, you know, initially. Um but as as we found, um there were actually permitted activities um. On site on some of these sites, and so. Um Christian brought that to my attention uh in his proposal and was able to provide evidence from the city's property files that the city had authorized. Um clearing within the wetland buffer of of the projects that he was involved in. And uh and so as we go forward, that is a discussion I'm having with um. With the uh wetland biologists that we're working with here. And uh and certainly, um I would afford Jeff the same opportunity if uh if we can determine that the city authorized those impacts. To his client's property, um then uh then we would certainly give that due consideration for um. For a reduced impact.
Great, and then so I and then I was gonna ask for this project as well, if you'd be willing to provide. That narrative addressing those specific uh RU criteria by the end of day Friday. Um. Mr. Reed.
Sure, I would be happy to do.
That's so, so the the. So, so the, the record's going to be left open until the end of the day Friday. So if there's also any tweaking of these recommended conditions you'd like to work with the applicant on, that can be sent to me at that time as well.
Yeah, can I address the previously converted stuff with Jeff? Have you done the research or have you asked the question at the, at the permit office? Whether these impacts that were previously performed were done under permit or not, or?
Yeah, so, so I have not gotten feedback from the, from the city. We just reviewed aerial photos in, in our discussion of, of providing, you know, what, what ratio? Because we had originally provided a one, a one point two to one ratio and then ended up falling to the one to one. And that was based off of the fact that the owner of the house to the north of this property owned the other lots as well, and then eventually sold them off. So I think that there would probably be some previous permitting, but we have not gone down that route yet. So that, that's something that we can do. They, they did historically store RVs and other material on that lot directly south of the, the neighbors there. They, they kind of used it as a yard for, for many, many years.
We've got a, we've got a really diverse history when it comes to permitting in Ocean Shores. Sometimes, sometimes it was like, well, I own both lots. I'm going to get permits on one and, and impact the others. And, and I just want to, you know, try to be.
Yeah, and we, and we, sorry, Marshall, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to be fair. If somebody's obtained permits and the city granted authorization for impacts, that, that we would consider that, so.
Okay. And yeah, and I don't think I would need to review any technical documents related to that prior site history. I guess I'm just thinking about, you know, writing this decision. I guess, Mr. Malahan, would you, would you then testify that there may have been some previous activity on the site causing degradation to the wetland buffer? And that the applicant could, that part of the buffer mitigation plan could include restoration of those areas?
Yeah, I mean, so.
Describe this in my decision.
Yeah, absolutely, we could. To be clear, we, we're providing mitigation through weather wax. So we, we, we do not currently have plans to restore any of these previously disturbed areas. That being said, the area that is encompassed within our impact area is generally those previously disturbed areas.
Okay, okay. I think, I think I understand now. So, so all mitigation is proposed is going to be compensatory. It's really.
Exactly.
What ratio is?
Right. May change. And our, yeah, and, and our previous ratio of one point two to one, getting reduced to one to one doesn't eliminate our ability to provide compensatory mitigation. So if we have to go back to the one point two to one, that nothing, with nothing is long.
Thank you. I, okay, I was a little confused. I, I think I understood now. Thank you very much. Okay, so I am going to, let's see here. Just turn back to my questions for Mr. Reed. Really, this is just a matter of curiosity. I just, I, the, this lot's located in this R six C zoning district. And I don't believe I've dealt with any properties in that zoning district before. And my understanding is it's intended for larger manufactured homes, but stick-built, single-family residences are allowed within the district as well. Is that correct?
That's exactly what it is.
And do you, just again, out of curiosity, do you happen to know if the applicant's intending on constructing a stick-built or utilizing a manufactured home?
I do not know that at this point.
Okay, then, that might be early for that. I was just kind of curious about this zoning district. And Mr. Malahan, with the understanding that, you know, you'll have the opportunity to discuss with Mr. Reed revising these conditions. Have you reviewed those? Do you have any, would the applicant have any issue complying with those?
Yeah, I have reviewed the conditions and they're reasonable to, to our proposal.
Thank you. And is there any other testimony you'd like to provide regarding this project? At this time? Is, is there anyone else on the applicant team? I see Ms. Turner's here, if she'd like to provide any comments or testimony.
I, I will provide a comment.
Can I, can I get you sworn in real quick?
That's wrong hand.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
And can you state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Randy, R A N D Y Turner, T U R N E R.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Anything you'd like to comment on, now's your opportunity.
Well, my only comments are that I, I really appreciate Mr. Malahan for being here because I really don't understand what's happening. I've never done this before. But I'm going to be a good Ocean Shores neighbor if we can get this worked out. So that's all I want to comment on.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Are there any other members of the applicant team that would like to testify? Before we see if there's any members of the public that would like to comment? I don't think so. Is there anyone in the room there from the public that would like to testify, Mr. Reed?
Uh, yeah, we do have two, two people that would like to comment.
Hey, great. Let's, are they going to come to the table? Okay, here we go. Want to be able to see them? Can, can we hear them from there?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and bring her up to my seat here. Take my seat and we'll let you.
Thank you for being here. Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today? And can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Nancy Bushman, N A N C Y B U S H M A N.
Thank you, Ms. Bushman. This is your opportunity to provide any testimony you would like on this current proposal.
Yeah, I live just adjacent to, to the six, three, two Duck Lake Drive, just to the north at six, two, eight Duck Lake Drive Northeast. And I've only lived there a few months. I did not have any involvement in the construction. I bought the house after the builders, Z Brothers had already completed the house and it had been on the market for a while. So I didn't see the house built. So I moved in February, March of just this year, just a few months. But as far as the impacts to this buffer zone, and I did not even understand that I was living in a buffer zone until very, very recently, within just a few days ago, I talked to my neighbor who had received some documentation on this that moved in. I did not, I had no idea. But what I would like to talk about or let you know is my observations about the degradation to the environment around my house. It was tremendous. I don't know what my builder went through, or maybe it was there before. Also, the amount of trash that I had to clean up around my house that was in the back beyond my fence, rotting away into the environment, prescription drug, rotting plastic. I can't even describe the amount of refuse and trash I found in that whole marshy area that I cleaned up bags of trash. I don't know where that came from. But it was mainly in the back there beyond my fence, but it was also around. Some of it, I think, is just from construction nails, construction materials. I did gather all that up and get that out, but I was really disturbed by the amount of trash. And I, I, as I said, I don't know where it came from. But if it was from construction, I would hope that we could mediate some of that on any new construction. I would think that that would be impacting wildlife. You know, just the amount of, you know, those plastic rings that come off of cans. You know, that impacts wildlife, ducks and can get that around their necks and so forth. I'm sure you're all aware of. So I'm disturbed by the amount of trash. But also what I saw in that buffer zone, now that I realize it's a buffer zone, is just that it was just all pushed down. And there didn't seem to be, from what I could see, any regard for the buffer zone. If I would have been involved in the construction, I would have made sure that they retain the trees that they could, that they didn't just raise everything inside, but I was not involved in it. But now that I do see that there is going to be something being constructed next door to me, I would just hope that the builder can be respectful of the environment that's there and not just take down trees unnecessarily, don't leave trash, you know, around that's going to infect the environment. Like I said, I don't know, I, I would think that the city would be concerned about, I mean, it was rotting away plastic back there. I don't know how long I've been back there, but it was definitely seeping into the groundwater. You know, and just the effects to the, to wildlife and so forth. I would hope that that, I don't even think I was able to get it all. My neighbor went back there too. And I mean, there was just still so much back there. It was kind of impossible to even get it up out of that, you know, kind of marshy area back there. So I, like I said, it might have been the public who, who created this mess back there, or it could have been workers. I just, I do not know. But I would hope that because this is a protected, that I know now that it's a protected wetland, that we can have more oversight over it, that we could know what's going on back there. And I know I will, if I see anything like that going on, I will let the city know for sure. But I just.
Yeah, absolutely. Could I, could I speak to that for just a minute?
I'm going to give you an opportunity. I just want to get through all the public testimony and then I'll turn back to the city and the applicant for any, any responses. Thank you. So Ms. Bushman, so, so you are the, the, the neighbor that's immediately north adjacent to this property. So you have that wetland to the east as well on your, on your property. So, and then your concern, if I'm understanding correctly, is with potential construction debris and also maybe some existing, just pollution that's happening within this wetland?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah. I'm going to keep an eye on it and clean it up as I see it. I know there's going to be some impacts from construction, but I would hope that since we're all meeting like this to discuss mitigation, that the builder would be cognizant of this and make sure that they, I've heard that there's going to be kind of a barrier fencing put up so that it, the building materials don't get out into the buffer zone and that workers are told, don't go camping behind, you know, and spread your trash out there. I mean, I would hope that all of that is being communicated to the builder and to his workers and some contractors and, and so forth. Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Bushman. I'm, I'm going to see if we can get some answers to your concerns after we hear from any other interested members of the public. Is there, is there any, does that conclude your comments for this?
Pretty much that. Other than the trash, just the, I need to find out more about where my house sits on this buffer zone and, you know, what kind of restoration should have been done of this area? Because it certainly looks like it's been trampled down unnecessarily. I mean, I, I think that they could have worked around, they could have built around some of these trees that they just raised. I, I'd like to find out more if there's anything the city can do to kind of restore some of that back there. Because there's eagles back there. I mean, we've got eagle, we've, we've got incredible amount of wildlife that's trying to make use of this area back there. And if it's all polluted and it's all being taken down, they're, they're going to lose this habitat they even have left back there. So I, I also wanted to ask or maybe find out, maybe I just need to talk to the city planner. But there's a huge conifer tree, a huge evergreen tree back there. I don't know where that sits, whether it's going to be on the new lot or whether, it's definitely in the buffer zone. I would hope that they can retain that tree. I see wildlife using that giant evergreen tree and I hope that it's just not taken down for the sake of, you know, easing construction. It seems like it's back far enough that they could leave it. Just my, my comments on that.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. We'll see if we can get you some answers to that. And for anything that's kind of out of the scope of this project, maybe that's something the city can follow up with you at a later time. Hello, would you like to provide some testimony today?
Please.
Okay, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
Thank you. And can you state and spell your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Jeff Reynolds, J E F F Reynolds, R E Y N O L D S. I'm a resident of six, two, four Duck Lake, which would be on the other side of Nancy from the, from the applicant property in question. I, I just have, just to, just to clarify, yes, of course, Nancy had a big question about the tree. That would be a big concern to me because that tree is well over a hundred years old. It is a coastal spruce of my, that I took it as, and I would like to have clarification on that. Secondly, both as property owners myself and Nancy next door, we were required, or I should say, our builder was required to put the fence in place. I was not aware of any alternate abilities to do any type of vegetation or anything like that. So I would like clarification as well on where that line is delineated on the property. And I apologize, I should have tried to pull up the documents before I came. But just to know where, I know there was some question about changing it just a little bit back there. But where are we talking about that back line? Because six, twenty-four and six, twenty-eight Duck Lane both have wood fences in place across the back. I just would like to know if the next property will follow that.
And just to, just so I'm understanding your concern, are you talking about the, the, the protective fencing that would be installed for the?
Yeah, correct. It is my understanding, the fence that was put in place was required by the biologist. By the, appointed by the city.
Okay, so if your concerns relate to that existing coastal spruce tree and the fed protective fencing that would be installed on this. Do you have any other comments you'd like to provide before we see if we can get some answers to your concerns?
I believe that'll cover it as well. And I just would reiterate Nancy's concerns about the impact of construction. And I'm certainly well aware that the, that the applicant will do their due diligence in keeping all of that in check.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Thanks, appreciate that.
Mr. Reed, is, are there any other members of the public there that would like to testify before we, I guess, turn to?
Nobody else here.
And then I, I guess, and we'll get a chance to get a response from the applicant team. But let me just check if the person labeled Brian would like to provide any testimony on this last matter.
No testimony.
Thank you. Okay, so Mr. Reed, it appears the concerns relate to some of the existing conditions of the wetland, construction debris, a large tree and the protective fencing. If you have any response to those concerns?
Yeah, in, in relation to the spruce tree that's at discussion, that appears to be in the, in the buffer based on the aerial photog that I have here, and that tree would not allow to be impacted as a part of the project. One thing that has been allowed in the past is if a, if a significant tree is blocking a, a view of an area, then they have been allowed to impact that tree by pruning up to twenty percent of the lower limbs. So as not to kill the tree, but also to avoid, to afford the view. I'm not sure if that's a consideration in this point or in this project. But as a tree that's in the, in the buffer that's unmitigated, that, that tree would not allow to be taken out. Regarding the trash, this is something that there, there is some construction debris that has come up in different issues, but the majority of trash that, and I have my, my planner also in the room with us here. In crawling through these undeveloped lots in the city of Ocean Shores, we're finding that the population of bear that we have in here make it a habit to raid the garbage cans and drag them into these more remote areas. I know in the last month, I have taken my neighbor's garbage from the back of my property on three separate occasions where the bear has come in in the middle of the night, grabbed the garbage and run to the back of my place and spread it all over. So, so we're finding that that is the majority of the, when you find raw garbage or things like that, the, the medicine bottles, those kind of things. We're finding that that's more the case than not is, is an issue with the bear. The the medicine bottles, those kind of things, we're finding that that's more the case than not is um, is an issue with a bear. As opposed to somebody actually dumping garbage on their property or or on the neighbor's property. But as it would pertain to construction debris, um, those are some of the things that the building official and I are trying to rein in on. And require, there is a requirement for the uh, the contractors to have um a refuse uh container onsite. And and keep their uh construction debris, you know, from blowing around the neighborhood, so we'll, we will continue to work on that. And uh, um, and make that a a better, a better neighbor type interaction.
So that's a a code enforcement kind of matter, Mister Reed?
Well, it's, yeah, it is more of a code enforcement type matter.
Okay, thank you.
I think we're down possibly to three bears, just for, for information's sake, uh, three or four bears in Ocean Shores, we've trapped a few and. And they've been relocated to other areas of the state, so we're working on trying to reduce that number as well, I know. There are, actually, there might be four, I think we have a sow with a couple of cubs, four that's running around, so they're making a mess in just about every neighborhood. From the ocean all the way to the bay.
Great, and then there was the concern about the, the protective fencing, where that would be located.
So, so in my discussions with the, with the delineators uh and owners of these wetlands. The uh, the, the protective fencing or the delineation fencing has been a kind of an evolving thing. Um, at a minimum, I have been requiring in the last, probably half a dozen projects that we've approved. Um, a, a two-rail fence as a minimum, in some cases, and it, and it might be the case in, in the. The individuals providing testimony today, that their contractor um installed a, a, a more robust fence than a two-rail fence. But um, basically, the, the, the concept or the purpose of the fence is to. Bring everybody's attention to the fact and the, and the planning department has purchased um critical area signs. Uh, to be at, at a minimum, located one on each fence, or if you have multiple fences, like your, if your project were to. Uh, include critical areas on the side of the property that require delineation, then we would require more signs on those fences, but the minimum requirement. Other than discussions that I've had with um Mister Frommuth, and and he's bringing a concept, I'm trying to find other. Uh, methods that are acceptable and being used in other communities to protect the critical areas. Um, and I have had conversations with uh, with another biologist. Um, discussing things like what um, what Jeff has brought up as far as um. Using, using vegetative habitat as a barrier. I don't know that I'm convinced that that's the best way to go at this point, and so. If, if we reduce the requirement to posts or something like that, where we've got an entire. Uh, side to side delineated area, and it doesn't make sense to use posts, I'm still gonna want to require the uh, the full. At a minimum, two-rail uh fence uh to delineate the unmitigated area. If that answers that question.
Great, Mister Reed, uh, anything else in response to the comments that we heard today?
Uh, I don't, I don't believe so.
Great, then I'll turn to uh, if the applicant or the applicant's expert would like to address the concerns raised by members of the public at today's hearing.
I would. I, um, you know, I, I appreciate that uh my neighbors are, aren't really happy that I'm coming. So I said I was gonna try to be a good neighbor, and I am, I don't want, uh, you know, I, I had. Um, talked with Jeff uh Malahan uh who I trust and uh. You know, it seemed to me like the vegetative barrier was a really good idea, because it, you know, would send out a root system. But um, you know, if, if fencing is needed, of course, that's what I'll do, but I'm not um. I'm not coming in here to fight with the neighbors, I just want the neighbors to know that, I'm, you know, I'm not uh. You know, I like the bears being there, even if they haul off garbage, but I uh, you know, I, I just. That, that kind of took me aback, I wasn't, I wasn't prepared for that, I was prepared for other stuff, but not uh. Not neighbors who are already worried about what's gonna happen there, because uh, you know, there are two new houses to the left of me. And uh, you know, I don't, the last time I was down at the property, those houses, one had sold and one had not. So I don't know what uh, I didn't, what, don't know anything about what they did and how they're being, but. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Turner, anything you'd like to add, Mister Malahan?
Uh, yeah, just, I think just to kind of echo um Randy's sentiment, I mean, um, you know, we're, we're, we're preparing documents. To provide mitigation for impacts, I also, I also prepared both reports for both of those structures that I think are the current residents of these. These people um on that whole street, so in, in all cases, there was mitigation provided. Um, there's, there's no kind of absent um T, you know, destruction of buffer. I just wanted to make that clear, is that the city did a good job in requiring and um reviewing our previous applications for, for getting those houses constructed as well. Um, and I stand by my work on those and provided a very similar plan that I I have for Randy on, on those properties. And so the impact to the buffer si- is actually the larger on those properties. Um, but um, they, they did provide compensatory mitigation with, with weather wax as well, um, and did have to do. Um, supplementary planting for, for maintaining the shoreline a- as well as, you know, constructing the fence, so those things have all been done. And we're kind of continuing that to the north there.
Great, thank, thank you, Mister Malahan, Mister Reed, any uh last thoughts on behalf of the city before I conclude this hearing?
Um, yeah, I'd just like to thank Jeff for his participation and, and, and Randy for your participation in the hearing. Um, I think we're, I think we're all pretty much in agreement that, you know, the, the neighborhood's gonna grow and. Um, and your neighbors will welcome you right in, they're just, you know, I mean, it's, it's a concern that, you know, when things are gonna change. Um, we want to make sure it's gonna change for the better, and your plan um certainly protects what's uh, what's out there. That everybody enjoys, so um, thank you both for, for participating and, and Jeff for your work on both of the other lots. Um, I saw this plan as very, very similar um to the other two plans. Which did uh, did an adequate job of uh protecting the environment that we're charged with protecting out there, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great, thank you, Mister Reed, uh, so uh, just to clarify, I'm leaving the record open until the end of the day Friday. To allow Mister Reed to submit a brief written narrative addressing the rule criteria and any revisions. To the recommended conditions, and with that, I am going to go ahead and adjourn this hearing, I want to thank everyone here.